All right. Good evening, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the Fruita City Council meeting. It is now seven P M. We are going to go ahead and call our meeting to order. Would you please call roll?
Here.
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 Late by about thirty minutes, Councilor Brian.
All right, we're going to move into our moment of silence and pledge of allegiance. If you please stand with us. We'd like to allow a moment of silence for all faiths and beliefs to opportunity for a silent prayer. Thank you. If you'd please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Now to the Republic, pur wish to stand on one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there is a quasi judicial public hearing item. Number two, A, the special event liquor permit. The applicant withdrew this application this morning at about nine thirty. So the packet has been updated on the website, but we need to remove that from the agenda.
All right, that's it?
That's it.
All right, do we have a motion with those changes?
I move we approve the agenda with the amended amendments. amended amendment changes.
I second.
Counselor Bremen?
Yes.
Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Cry?
Yes.
Counselor Brian?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, we do not have any proclamations or presentations tonight, so we're going to move into our public participation time. So this section is set aside for the city council to listen to comments by the public regarding items that do not otherwise appear on the agenda. Generally, the city council will not take any action or discuss these items, and we please ask you to limit those comments to three minutes. So if there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on something that's not on the agenda, now is the time. Have you seen anybody online that would like to speak? All right, with that, we're going to close public participation and move into our consent agenda. So these are items where all conditions or requirements have been agreed to or met prior to the time they come before council. And they'll all be voted with one final action. So we are going to open that up to public comment. Is there anybody that'd like to speak on something that's on the consent agenda? Now would be the time to do that. Are you seeing anybody online that would like to speak? All right, we're going to close the consent agenda to public comment and bring it back to council. Are there any questions or do we have a motion?
I move we approve the consent agenda as stated in the packet.
I'll second.
And so Perser?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Cry?
Yes.
Counselor Brian?
Yes.
Counselor Bremen?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, with that, we're going to move into our public hearings tonight. And so first on our list are a quasi judicial hearing. So with those, just so the public knows, we will have a presentation from the city, then from the applicant, and then we will open them up to public comment and then bring it back to council. So our first one is a special event liquor permit application. So we're going to turn it over to our deputy city clerk Deb Woods.
Evening, Mayor and City Council, Deputy City Clerk Deb Woods, and I'm here to present the Fruita Area Chamber of Commerce's application for a special event liquor permit for the Grand Valley Food Truck Friday that will be occurring this Friday, September ninth, from five thirty to eight at Reed Park. The Fruita Area Chamber has requested to be able to sell and serve beer at Reed Park during Food Truck Friday. They will sell drink tickets and will be hiring a local brewery to serve the beer. There is a diagram in your council packet that illustrates the beer garden area that will be enclosed with metal fencing on three sides and with food trucks that will be parked on South Maple Street for the other side. Grand Valley, or excuse me, chamber board members, employees and volunteers will be working with Grand Valley Food Truck's hired security to monitor the licensed area. And the chamber will be checking IDs and wristbands will be issued to those who are twenty-one or over. There will be signage posted at each entrance and exit indicating no alcohol beyond this point. And servers of the event will be trained in intervention procedure procedures concerning the sale and service of alcohol beverages. Fruita Chief of Police Dave Kraus reviewed the chamber's application and issued his statement that there is nothing that would prohibit the issuance of the license being requested. So it is staff's recommendation to the city council that the application for the special event liquor permit be approved subject to the following three conditions. One, the entrance and exit shall be monitored closely and continuously by event staff in order to prevent alcohol beverages from going into or out of the licensed area. Two, the licensee needs to be aware that they are solely responsible for the control of the licensed premises. And three, all other procedures presented by the chamber will be followed. And that concludes my presentation. Mike Ritter with the Fruita Chamber is present as the applicant's representative. Is he online, Shannon?
Yes, he is.
Yes, with that great background again.
How's it going, everybody? So the only change I heard that we'll have is we weren't able to get any breweries to serve for us, so we'll be distributing cans like Bud Light, Coors Light, and some others from local breweries.
All right, is that all you have to add?
Yep, thanks.
All right, thank you, Mike. All right, with that, we're going to open up to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this item? You see anybody online wanting to speak?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor.
All right, with that, we're going to close the public comment and bring you back to council. Are there any questions, comments?
I wanted to say if they're going to do cans instead, are we going to have some additional recycling receptacles and trash, stuff like that, just to kind of make up for the extra that we would have outside of a normal food truck Friday?
I don't know about recycling, but I do know that the city does put out extra trash cans for us.
Okay.
How about recycling?
Recycling would be cool if we could do it with the cans.
Yeah, it's above my pay grade, but we could definitely look into that for down the road.
I could, I could check with waste management to see if we can get some out there by this Friday. We have time to do that.
Any other questions or comments? All right, then do we have a motion?
Move to approve the application for special events liquor permits for the Fruita Area Chamber of Commerce to sell and serve beer. The Food Truck Friday event to be held on Friday, September ninth, twenty twenty-two, from five thirty to eight at Reed Park located at two fifty South Elm Street.
Second.
Beat me.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Cry?
Yes.
Counselor Brian?
Yeah.
Counselor Bremen?
Yes.
Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, our next quasi judicial hearing is Rose Creek Preliminary Plan, and we've got our Planning and Development Director, Dan Karras, here to present.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Again, just for the record, my name is Dan Karras. I'm the planning director for the city of Fruita. Before you this evening is the Rose Creek Preliminary Plan. It's application twenty twenty-two twelve, and I just want to formally enter the staff's presentation into the record. Again, this is the Rose Creek Preliminary Plan. The representative is Vortex Engineering. You see the location and the parcel numbers associated with the the subject site, which contains two parcels, and they're located at the northwest corner of nineteen N K Road. The zone is is presently community residential, and this is a request for an approval of a preliminary plan application for the development of a hundred and thirty single-family lots on approximately twenty-two point seven four acres. Just for the record and for the edification of the public, the the code contemplates essentially four different noticing provisions within our land development code. One is the postcard, one is the signposting, and then one is the newspaper, and then a site-specific posting outside of City Hall. You see all the applicable dates that were associated with the initiation of this project, which took place earlier this summer and is well in advance of the prescriptive elements that are set in the code for the number of days that are required prior to public hearing dates being being set. This is the signposting that is done in a conspicuous location that essentially identifies the two stub streets, one coming off of Myers and Palace, and then one was at the corner of nineteen N K Road. You can see an aerial photograph right there of the where the sign postings were located that have the hearing dates that are specific to Planning Commission and also specific to council. With that, we also have the the noticing of the properties. This happens three hundred and fifty feet within the subject property, and you can see that that three hundred and fifty feet, it actually ends up touching multiple different parcels, some that are outside of the city limits and some that are inside of the city limits. You see essentially sixty-one of those that were noticed as a part of the mailings. This is the zoning map. You can see kind of in that black outline. In the yellow is the subject property with a couple planned developments to the to the west, one being Brandon Estates, and then to the north, the Bern Heidi P U D and a location of the Monument Ridge Elementary School. And then further to the west, along the Otley alignment is Holly Park Mobile Home Subdivision and the townhomes associated. Again, here's just an aerial photograph that you see a lot of agricultural uses to the north and to the to the east, and then some unincorporated ground that is south of of K Road and Brandon Estates directly to the west. This is just a depiction of the school boundaries, which we thought was important to share with the council and the public, just because of some of the density bonus criteria that have been requested as a part of this application and some of the trail connections that have been proposed. We just wanted to make sure that, you know, if the i- if the intent was that there were going to be ways to be off the street and potentially make your way towards the elementary school that that we showed the boundaries as far as like the properties that would be within the boundary to Monument Ridge Elementary. The code contemplates five approval criteria for a preliminary plan, not going to specifically state all the rationale that is embedded into the staff report, but it essentially is the conformance with the long-range plans and any applicable code regulations that are codified within our municipal code and then also within our land development code. Compatibility with surrounding land uses, the ability to serve the site with urban level services, that's not just specific to utilities, but also to fire protection and police protection, and the list goes on. The preservation of any natural features and adequate environmental protection, and then the ability for the applicant to resolve any in all comments that were placed by not only the city, but any review agencies that are specific to the site. This are the site proposal, but also not to be limited to the fact that like whatever is being submitted needs to be able to be resolved without an adequate redesign that would then come back before Planning Commission and Council. The applicant has requested a density bonus criteria. You see the table that is listed. It has the applicable zone districts that are able to be used within this code section. So we've got the C R, which is at the top of that table, which is community residential, and then South Fruit of Residential. And you see the the essentially the performance metrics that if you provide twenty percent open space, bike and trail connections, alley or shared driveway access, or a mix of housing, you have the ability to garner a density bonus criteria, which gives you one more unit per acre that is outside of the already prescribed amount of density that is allowed within that zone district. The applicant has requested a density bonus criteria for the bike and trail connections, and the code minimum is five hundred linear feet of that is qualifying for this bonus, and the applicant is has proposed to construct just shy of fourteen hundred linear feet of internal trails to the subdivision. A mix of housing is also being requested here. Again, want to note that the density for the hundred and one hundred and thirty units for the twenty-seven plus acres of of ground, you'd only need to actually obtain one density bonus criteria, but just as as a part of our review, you know, we discussed this with the applicant, and they wanted to essentially apply for both, but build under that that density that would be otherwise garnered if they were awarded to. And so essentially, the code contemplates, you know, a mix of housing and it has a twenty percent of the of the dwelling units need to be attached. In this particular instance, the applicant is requesting a hundred and ten, so eighty-five percent being attached, and then fifteen percent, which is twenty, being detached. The Planning Commission held a public hearing August ninth, and the minutes of that meeting are in your packet, and the Planning Commission recommendation is in your packet as well. They voted five to one for approval, or they approved to recommend that the council consider this application. Essentially, the conversation was around open space, and certainly there are public comments that are reflected in your packet that talk about density and other particulars, irrigation, traffic, and, you know, the intersection of nineteen and K Road, but as the Planning Commission deliberated, they essentially narrowed that down to a recommendation for approval for for this particular application with the recommendation that any verbal or written communication that was mentioned at the at the public hearing, that that's a condition of approval in addition to the council contemplating some open space within the subject property. We did receive a new site layout by the applicant, which I can attempt to bring up here. And I do believe that the the council has a revised site plan that they've been handed out. Or we can make sure that we run down and grab that for you, but essentially it is proposing that they would they would construct what is two open spaces is that is is that is at the intersection of Brandon Drive and Derby. And so there's a little park that is within the Brandon Estates subdivision, and they're planning on essentially mirroring or at least closely mirroring the amount of square footage with two individualized parks that would be a part of.
Both be the same size or together?
So one of them is is slightly smaller than the other one, but essentially a quarter acre a lot. So okay, see the traditional kind of seven thousand to eight thousand square foot, a single-family lot would be the size of the the two parks that are within that site. Open up the PowerPoint one more time. So since the Planning Commission meeting, I was hoping to show you the the site plan, but I'll just describe it. It's embedded within this slide. We did receive an updated layout. We'll give that to you as soon as our deputy city clerk can bring that up with two additional parks. You see the relative summation of the square footage that is within the site and doesn't change any of the the numerical count of the of the lot of the lots that are being proposed, but it does show where those parks are located and what they look like in relationship to the rest of the subdivision. I do know that the applicant has the actual site plan, so maybe they can mention in further detail what exactly it is that they're trying to accomplish with the proposal of those, but I think that this was in recognition of the comments that they received at the Planning Commission meeting. All the review comments that the staff has received as a part of this application have been embedded into your packet. All the written comments that have been received are embedded within the packet that they received prior to Planning Commission, also prior to this meeting. And as a part of the a code requirement, you see the applicable section right there. The applicant did complete a neighborhood meeting on August first prior to the Planning Commission meeting, and as a result, it is the staff's recommendation that they approve the proposed Rose Creek Preliminary Plan with the condition that all review comments and issues identified in the staff report are adequately resolved prior to the final plot application. And that concludes my presentation, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Now we've got Vortex Engineering here that are going to be presenting. And Robert, if you want to state your name for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Robert Jones. Second, I'm with Vortex Engineering. Our office address for the record is eight sixty-one Rude Avenue in Grand Junction. And we are the applicant's representative. Technical. Apologies for the delay. As I'd stated, we are the applicant's represented representative will be presenting the Rose Creek subdivision for you tonight. As usual, staff has done an excellent job describing the background of the application and the different elements that we have worked into this proposed project. So in an effort to save everyone's time, I'll not repeat a lot of what Mr. Karras has talked with you about tonight. We are proposing a hundred and thirty lot subdivision with both a mixture of single-family homes detached and attached on twenty-two point seven four acres. This will provide for a mix of the housing types to the the community. The proposed density for Rose Creek subdivision is five point seven dwelling units per acre, which is compatible with the future land use designation of our four through eight residential and the existing residential developments adjacent to the property. As Mr. Karras had identified, there are two access points to the west with connections and extensions on to Myers and Palace Lane of the Brandon Estates subdivision. And then an additional extension of Myers Lane to nineteen Road that is also provided internally. In addition, this project will provide for the widening of nineteen Road. And a northbound turn lane and a Myers Lane will be provided for Otley Avenue improvements of vertical curb gutter and sidewalk for the majority of the missing section between Brandon Estates and nineteen Road to the west will also be installed with this project. In hearing the comments from the adjacent neighborhoods as well as going through Planning Commission's hearing and listening to some of the comments that were provided to us. We did seek ways to provide for more green space within the development. The developer did agree to modify the plan, and we have incorporated two pocket parks within this project. You can see on the slide, there are those two areas in green. Now, those were incorporated between the Planning Commission hearing and tonight. So these parks are identified as tracks D and M on your plans located on the west and the east sides of the project. These parks will be landscaped and park equipment provided for the enjoyment of development residences. Having demonstrated based upon the Fruita Land Use Code and approval criteria, this application is in compliance with sections seventeen twenty-one oh four oh. Section seventeen oh five oh eight oh in sections seventeen oh nine oh four oh. All review agency comments have been addressed or will be addressed through the final plan application process. And we would respectfully request your approval of the preliminary plan as it's been presented to you tonight. And with that, I would answer any questions or turn it back to council.
All right, so we're going to open it up to public comment, and then we'll bring it back for rebuttal after you hear public comments and questions from council.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we're going to open it up to public comments. So if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this item, we'll go through and have have you stand up, state your name, address for the record, and then we're going to ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. So we'll start right here in the front.
My name is Alan Emsley, and I live at one five five one Lola Court. I do, I do have some slides here. I'm very pleased to hear that the engineer reported that there is some flexibility on green space. If I could, can we have that? For your short presentation. As you can tell, the the concern is about the green space. And we note that the plan calls for or reports that there is parks and other facilities within one point five miles of the development. And as I checked the map, only three parks are within that space, and two of them are in Brandon Estates. And so I wish I wish to address that with respect to the amount of space allocated by Brandon Estates for their residents and ask that the plan include somewhat more than what has been allocated in this new and revised site plan. Based on the recommendation for green space, addition to Rose Creek, the the parks and green space area provided to Brandon Estates residents amounts to a little over seventy-four thousand square feet or about four percent of the residential space. So if you use that as a guideline and ask that Rose Creek allocate about four percent of their residential space, that would amount to about point nine acres, not not point three five. So about two and a half times what they've in their revised plan. And for a hundred and thirty dwelling units, that would provide about three hundred square feet per residence equivalent to about two-thirds of a lane of the community center's swimming pool. Furthermore, such a park, such a facility or set of parks lighten the load on other adjacent parks, particularly that of Brandon Estates, who's responsible for the repair and maintenance through the HOA. If they were not to address any needs for repairs and maintenance, the city would take over and charge the HOA, who would then pass it along to community residents in Brandon Estates. So our concern is for the children and for the right kind of facility and for the fair treatment of HOA members in Brandon Estates with respect to the cost of members in Brandon Estates with respect to the cost of maintenance and repairs on their parks. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this item right here on the end? Yeah, you. So again, if you please state your name and address for the record.
Karen Ford, and my address is one five seven three Elmont Court. I'll be, in order to be succinct and stay on point, I'll be reading my statement.
Okay.
In my opinion, the proposed density is too high for the location of this subdivision. It's my understanding that the Rose Creek proposal is for a hundred and thirty dwelling units, eighty-five percent attached duplex like townhomes and fifteen percent single family detached homes. Why not reverse those percentages to fifteen percent attached duplex like townhomes and eighty-five percent single family detached houses? I understand that the city of Fruta needs more affordable housing. But this development is on the eastern boundary of the city of Fruta at nineteen and K roads. The other side of nineteen road, the eastern side is agricultural. This to me is a classic example of sprawl rather than infill. If infill is the goal of the comprehensive plan, then infill should occur more at the heart, the downtown core of Fruta, not start at its more rural edges. By the way, I thought that Janine and James campaigned on opposing development like this and on keeping the small town more rural feeling of Fruta. This is like dwell two point oh. It was proposed off seventeen and a half road a few years ago. And that project was rejected largely due to the large scale grassroots petitioning effort of the nearby residents. Thank you for hearing my perspective.
Thank you, Karen. All right, I saw some other hands right there in the turquoise shirts. All right, we won't. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Joanne Anderson. I live in seventeen forty-eight Brandon or seventeen forty-eight Palace Lane in Brandon Estates. I have a couple of concerns. Mainly, my concern is for the infrastructure of Fruta. It seems as though there's been building hand over fist everywhere. And I don't feel that the infrastructure at Fruta supports the existing population. And I did get a petition signed for a moratorium on building until the infrastructure is improved to support the the current residents of Fruta. In respect to Rose Creek subdivision, there's been no talk about putting in speed bumps along the roads that will transit through Brandon Estates, which I think are crucial to keeping the the flow of traffic to a dull roar. Additionally, I think that the density, the population density for Rose Creek, I did speak with an individual who is a firefighter, first responder. And he is a resident of Brandon Estates as well. And he made the comment that he would not want to have to go in there in an emergency because of the ingress and egress is so tight that it caught would cause a difficulty. If you think that every one of those homes has at least two vehicles and they're possibly parked on the roadway and you try to get a emergency vehicle through, that's a no go in my book and also in his. I don't know who in the planning cycle looks at that type of situation for ingress egress of emergency vehicles. But I don't know if that's been done or not. But anyway, those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this item? All right, in the very back in the well, we'll get to you in the blue light blue shirt. You gotta jump up quicker, I think, to get up here. Again, if you say your name and address for the record, please.
I am Josh Eisen, owner of fifteen seventy-five Lola Court. I've looked here for three years now. And I just wanted to let's see, yeah, the density bonus is just the eighty-five to fifteen, eighty to twenty, why it couldn't be flipped and the cohesion of this neighborhood looking like this, it'll look completely, it won't, they won't look the same. And then having their buildings look different and then the middle in theirs, they have, let's see, they have an access point right in the middle for twenty-four vehicles to go in the middle of other houses. And nowhere else in Fruta looks like that. And it just like, if you look at the center, they're all jammed in there. And like, I came from Salt Lake for somewhere like that. And it just, you don't want to live in places like that because every you just jam packed with your neighbor and you basically see what it's in their window. Everything's jam packed and you have no room to breathe, no nothing. So, yeah, and then yeah, and the spirit of the density bonuses to allow a mixed housing mixed within the design of the neighborhood, not to create a neighborhood of the same type of house, only to be bordered by a different house. And yeah, that's it.
All right. Well, thank you for your comments. All right. And the blue shirt in the back.
Members of the council, my name is Mark Miller. I live at seventeen twenty-five Palace Lane. My wife and I have lived there for almost five years. In what we consider a really beautiful community and 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 part of this, you know, greater area with the the town and the city. And I'm just going to read my comments verbatim, if I may, and hand each of you a copy when I'm finished, if that's acceptable.
Yes, that is.
Several concerns come to mind as a future neighbor residing in close proximity to this proposed development. First, let it be known that we recognize and fully support the owner of this development's rights to utilize and develop within certain reasonable limits their property as they please and deem fit. This is fundamental and undisputed. Having acknowledged this, however, several things come to mind, which we hope will be taken into consideration for the sake of all interested parties in our community. Given the proposed density of this new development, these relatively smaller developed properties will necessarily be priced toward lower value homeowners. This in itself is not an issue. There's always been and will be strong market demand for lower priced homes. However, with this type of development, if there is common access between the existing development of Brandon Estates and Rose Creek subdivision, the residents of each development may experience undesirable effects from increased road and other traffic from the residents of one development into the other, such as noise, greater traffic volume, increased potential for vandalism, theft, et cetera. However, perhaps the most significant impact of developing Rose Creek subdivision utilizing the current high density plan would be the negative impacts upon all surrounding property values. The cumulative collective negative effects of this development upon property values for the residents in and around Brandon Estates will most certainly be in the tens of millions of dollars. Preferably, I would like to see the city council reject outright the plan for development of Rose Creek subdivision as it currently exists. Our community may perhaps be able to utilize and even welcome a development such as this in our area, but not in such close proximity to existing developments of such dissimilar nature and not to such a profound detriment to neighboring properties and neighborhoods. I urge the city council to either insist upon a complete redesign for this proposed development in a style and density mirroring that of the existing neighboring properties, or refuse to authorize any plans for the development of this property otherwise. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mark. Well, he's handing those out. Is there anybody else right here in the dark blue shirt?
Mr. Miller, if I may have a copy as well for the official record.
Mark, do you have an extra copy for Deb?
Thank you.
Well, thanks for taking the time to have a meeting with all of us, people that have come out from the city of Fruta. My name is David Lee. I live at eighteen ninety-four Harts Court. Officially, I'm not in the city of Fruta, but I have been for roughly, I mean, I've lived in Fruta. I consider myself living in Fruta for twenty-five years. Lived in Sunflower Estates for a number of years, lived in Orchard Valley West for actually eighteen years before I moved out to where I'm at now. I know our particular area is within the Fruta Growth Plan. And when we moved out there, we knew that this area at nineteen and K road would probably eventually be built on and probably a subdivision put on because you look at the roads from Brandon Estates, they're coming right that direction toward nineteen road, you kind of expect it. So I look at it going, I, we expect expansion, we expect growth. But I also go, and you know, I give give a lot of credit to Vortex Engineering and Steve and Robert for taking the time to they've answered a number of my questions throughout the months. Actually, years, it's been, it's been quite a while. No issue with growth. The thing that I I brought up during the planning commission meeting was around, you know what? Maybe Fruta City Council needs to look at your land use codes around density. That seems to be the always the argument over the last year, couple of years, you drive in, I mean, again, I just mentioned, I lived in Sunflower Estates, I lived in Orchard Valley West. I couldn't imagine living in Fruta and such small lots, just a high density. But it is, you keep on approving it. So I look at it, the planning commission, I found it very interesting. You you come up here, you make the presentation that the planning planning commission approved this five to one. Originally, they denied it because it was made very clear with them that they can't deny it if it's within the land use code. Okay, so within the land use code, then developers can do whatever they want, as long as it's within that. Why have a planning commission? Why doesn't it just come to you if they can't deny something as long as it's within the land use codes? I just had to throw that out there. It was interesting. My big issue, living out near that nineteen and K road, and I see the constant approval of more subdivisions coming in from nineteen and K going all the way down to six and fifty is what are you going to do with that traffic? And I always hear another thing I brought up in the planning commission meeting, you always have these traffic studies done. You have the the developer pay for a traffic study. It's almost like the fox gun in the hen house. Why doesn't the city of Fruta pay for a traffic study and then charge the developer? And also, these traffic studies do not take into consider consideration other developments that are already in the planning stages. For example, this particular traffic study didn't take into consideration Fruta Muse going in just right near the elementary school and the traffic that's going to be going down at eighteen and a half and nineteen and K.
Hey David, your three minutes is up, so finish that train of thought and then your three minutes is up. So if you want to finish that train of thought.
But again, my biggest issue is what are the plans with nineteen road? Widening it, what kind of plans do you have with the county to widen that road, put bike lanes in, whatever you need to do? And the biggest thing that I feel like you need to do that the city of Fruta needs to do and the county is make nineteen and K a four way stop now. Not later, make it do it now. So the city of Fruta and the county people can get used to that. So you don't continue to have accidents there all the time.
All right. Well, thank you, David. All right. Is there somebody else that would like to speak on this item?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, we do have a few people online, so I just want to remind them if they'd like to provide a comment on this item, they can raise their hand. Or if you call, then you can dial star nine, you'll be unmuted in the order that we received. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Shannon. All right.
Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Michael Handley of sixteen forty-six Myers Lane. I am on the board of Brandon Estates. I also serve on the architecture approval committee as it layers on to the board. I've heard a lot more comments than you will hear tonight, but what you've heard is a sampling of what I've heard. So I won't go over the ground that's already been covered here. Other than to say the the residents of Brandon Estates always assumed that we would have development in in that parcel of land. They always assumed that it would look a lot like Brandon Estate looks. The concern is of the density. You're packing families in about as tight as you can pack families in on that amount of acreage. Now, I know you've done traffics or have heard traffic studies, you'll read traffic studies in the submitted plan. But the thing that they aren't recognizing is all those families, when they take their kids to school, bring them home from school, they're going to come down Myers Lane to eighteen and a half and over to the elementary school on K four. That's going to be a lot of extra traffic through Brandon Estates that I don't think has been recognized by anyone. So echoing what's been said, I urge the council to slow it down, take a look, and consider whether this development adjoining Brandon Estates, which will be a virtual extension of Brandon Estates, is really an appropriate development. I echo the thought that perhaps we should flip the density from attached and detached housing and maybe make it fifteen percent attached housing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this item? Are there in the brown shirt? Or black, I guess it's.
Hello, I'm Tiffany Kenny, co-owner of fifteen seventy-five Lola Court. I have lived in Fruta, voted in Fruta and paid Fruta taxes for three years. And I'm in support of the Fruta Comprehensive Plan. It's the Fruta Comprehensive Plan supports infill over sprawl. Well, I just want to say this infill does not have to take the shape of eighty-five percent attached housing. It can take different forms that are more mitigated and consistent with housing developments already existing in the surrounding region. Additionally, the the Fruta Comprehensive Plan supports a thriving downtown core. As such, I would argue it's more appropriate to build a development like this with higher density closer to downtown. While the developer claims that there is slower development in Fruta, this development should be thoughtful and intentional and as is consistent with the surrounding region. It should not be made hastily or it should not be made hastily to allow this developer to make a quick buck. I'm not against development. I'm against development that is solely about profits and not about providing the opportunity to live as a fruitin. We want our future neighbors to live as fruitins, not to be cramped into this neighborhood. When we first moved to the Grand Valley, we had the opportunity to live anywhere in this region and we strategically chose Fruta. Additionally, this developer claims that these houses will help quote strategic economic development by adding affordable housing. And I do not believe that this is true in that these these houses will be priced outside the range of many workers. This has already happened in our neighborhood when they developed more of Lola Court. And there they put in six different houses there. They were all three hundred square feet less than otherwise. And they sold them for four hundred thousand dollars each. So with that, I also just want to say the compatibility of the Rose Creek neighborhood is not in line with section seventeen point zero seven point zero eight. This neighborhood and its design have a disproportionate and severe impact on Brandon Estates, on the traffic that flows throughout the neighborhood, on the overall look and fill of Brandon Estates. The traffic will increase. It doesn't take a team of engineers to figure out that adding a hundred and thirty attached houses will add more than two hundred and sixty drivers on the streets of Fruta and Brandon Estates. While the roads will not degrade because of that many drivers, it will certainly increase traffic in that in that region. We are excited ultimately to welcome new neighbors to Fruta. We have loved living in Fruta and loved living in Brandon Estates. But this plan is not the way to do it, to add on to this existing neighborhood. Again, this plan should be rejected just because something can technically be done according to city regulations does not mean it should be done. In closing, you should vote no on this at Rose Creek subdivision. It's not the right plan. As our elected representatives, you have the ability to require this developer to come up with the right plan for Fruta and its residents, some sort of compromise, not this travesty. Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany. Shannon, have you seen anybody online that are raising their hand before we?
Seeing none right now, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Is there anybody else? All right, right back here. All right, is there anybody else? All right, right back here.
Evening, my name is DC Alcantara. I live at, um, uh, five thirty-eight Lowest Drive. And I've been a resident there for seven years, actually eight years. I have voted and paid taxes in Fruta. My concern is, uh, as a former EMT, first responder, is the ingress and egress out of, uh, Brandon Estates and this particular subdivision, Rose Creek. When you look at one entry from, what is it, nineteen road and the rest through, uh, Brandon Estates, uh, it concerns me, should there be any kind of, of a small disaster, you know, God helps that ever happens. But you would have, uh, multiple EMS, local law enforcement agencies trying to vie access in there. When you have people trying to bring their children in and out of school and residents returning home or leaving. If I only see one entrance into nineteen road, that is a grave concern to me. I just feel that, should we have a mass disaster? I mean, one of the biggest concerns I had was discussing um, the, the recent fire, uh, in Paradise, California. There was one entry and exit out of that community. And barring any, uh, you know, incidents like that, I think it's something we should seriously consider before we bring this forward. High density, I, I love living in that neighborhood. And I would welcome neighbors, but at the same time, all my neighbors have children. And they're walking, they're riding their bicycles. If that, if those roads through that community is taken out by all these neighbors from this new neighborhood, when they could go around or possibly exit through nineteen or perhaps even to put, um, into K road, that would help. But when you just have basically two or three roads that go in and out of there, that, that's grave concern to me as a, as a residential owner. That, those are my only concerns. I do have to admit that I agree and I second all the, all the suggestions by the last six speakers here. Thank you.
Thank you, DC. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this item? All right, right here.
Mayor and council, I'm Robert Rudio. I live at fifteen forty-two Elmont Court. And, um, I have already heard most of my concerns addressed here, so I won't go over that again. With one exception, uh, I feel as though the balance between, uh, single family and attached is way out of proportion, uh, given its proximity to our development and just the sense of how many people that we'll put trying to come through our community in terms of going to school. There's going to be probably a lot of children in there. Uh, a lot of them going through to the elementary school and that seems to be a, a bit egregious to me. Given that it's probably the only path that they'll be able to take reasonably. The other thing that I would like to add is I feel it would be important to add a condition to whatever is approved. That the barriers that are now at the end of Myers and Powis in, in both of those cases remain intact until all construction is complete, totally complete. And then the barriers could be removed so that we don't have construction traffic going through our development as well. Keep it simple. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Robert. Anybody else online? No?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor.
All right, is there anybody else in the audience that'd like to speak on this item? Because once I close this, all right.
My name is Justin Gollub. I live at sixteen fifty-nine Palace Lane. Mr. Mayor and Council, thanks for your, uh, thanks for your time tonight and allow us to speak. So I'll echo much of what my, um, fellow audience members said. A lot has been covered tonight. I, I agree with it. What I'd like to draw attention to is really what the, you know, in terms of the approval criteria, really that issue of compatibility. Um, like many speakers tonight, I approve of and am a supporter of the comp plan. I was part of the comp plan process and so I, I definitely support it. I am a supporter of people moving to Fruta. I'm not anti-growth. This is not an anti-growth message. This is a smart growth message. This is also a, a growth message of understanding that there are already people who live here of which we need to think about their positions when we think about growth. So the big issue with me is compatibility. Like it or not, this is going to be an informal extension of Brandon Estates. There's no delineating factor. I do think the, the, the engineers for including the parks, I do thank them for feathering some of the single family attached housing around the perimeter that abuts Brandon Estates, but I certainly think there could be much more to that. The minimum, the minimum for diversity of housing is twenty percent. They chose eighty-five percent. That was a choice. It was their decision to be able to make that, to go well above the twenty percent. I would encourage them to rethink that choice and also think of creative ways to perhaps feather that density or that attached housing further away from the edge of Brandon Estates. Because if we look at it and we look at the community residential zone, and this is quoting from the, the, the packet that was given to, um, planning commission. According to community residential, the purpose of, uh, this zone is to allow for moderate density detached, single family residential neighborhoods with the inclusion of other housing types. When people bought into Brandon Estates, yes, we knew thing, there was going to be a development there. I agree with that. I look forward to my kids meeting friends in that development. I think there's a different way to do this, to look at the existing, uh, the existing neighbors and their interests. Some things to think about, um, again, that two-thirds of the roads will go through Brandon Estates that will feed this. So I don't see how this doesn't have an impact on Brandon Estates when two-thirds of the roads feed into this neighborhood. Um, and I'll close with saying that I, I did go back and listen to the candidate forum that was held. And some words that were thrown about, um, I should, let me, let me take that. Some words that were talked about when we, when asked about how to manage growth. Some words are, that were discussed by some of the candidates, slowly was one of them. Um, growth, uh, should be managed slowly. Smart growth, listening compromise is another one. I think that's a key word tonight. Can there be a compromise that looks to both the developer and the existing neighborhood? And I'll give a, a loose quote that I got out of this, which was when asked how to manage growth, keep what people were here before us wanted, uh, at the same time allowing new people to come in. I support both those statements. I look for diversity of housing. I look for new people coming in. I think this proposal is too focused on the people coming in and not enough on the people who live there. So I respectfully ask that you decline the proposal.
All right, thank you, Justin. All right, is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? This will be your last opportunity. Once I close public comment, uh, are you seeing anybody else online?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor.
All right, last opportunity. Anybody have anything they want to add? All right, with that, we're going to close public comment and we're going to bring it back to Robert. Do you want to have a rebuttal on any of the comments or questions that were addressed?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This project, um, has gone through various permutations, um, over um, quite a long time and going back and forth and looking at the different elements of the comprehensive plan. The land use code, um, talking with staff about modifications that could be made to um, make this a really great development, um, which we think it is. And I, I won't spend a lot of time, um, talking about it, but I, I think it's necessary to, um, I was part of the comprehensive plan, uh, process and updates and I was part of the fruit of land use code, um, updates and process as well, um, set on, um, many different committees, um, even some of you. You know, the comprehensive plan revisions and the land use code revisions that took place were a direct result of the issues that we face in the city of Fruta. From two thousand ten to two thousand eighteen, ninety-seven percent of all new construction was single family detached homes. That's a problem and it's a result of, um, the one, one of the reasons that, that we struggle with, you know, housing prices and um, affordability or even attainability in the city of Fruta. Um, and I know you're probably all very, very much educated on that. But I, I think it was in, it, it's important to, to remember that because the comprehensive plan, um, was a process by which I believe we had over, you know, four thousand, um, partic- participants in within, you know, the city of Fruta comments and attendance and meetings and so forth. And that's the plan that the residents of the city of Fruta wanted. Not this particular developer or not this neighborhood, but, but the community as a whole. And that was evaluated and, and ultimately approved by the city council. I heard comments about, you know, why don't we reverse the fifteen to eighty-five percent? Um, meaning eighty-five percent single family detached and fifteen percent, um, attached. And it's for all those reasons that I just listed, um, not only that, but if I were to bring a plan before staff, um, with those percentages, um, it, it wouldn't comport to your comprehensive plan. And it wouldn't meet your land use code. I love the word compatibility. I, I truly do, um, because it can mean so many different things to so many different people, but I think one thing that we can agree on is that compatibility does not mean exactly the same. That's not what compatibility means. I heard talk about, um, access and, and traffic. Um, this development has three public access points. Exactly as the adjacent neighborhood, um, Brandon Estates does. So there's not an issue with access into this project. The Lower Valley Fire Department was part of the review process and one of the review agencies. Um, and they had no issues with the access or the internal design of the project or emergency responders, uh, or otherwise. I did bring, um, with me tonight, um, Mr. Eric Marquez, who's a traffic consultant on this project. And would ask that he had come up and kind of go through a few of the items, um, within his study that may help to um, you better understand, um, what impacts, if any, that this project would have on nineteen road and the adjacent development.
Hi, I'm Eric Marquez with Apex Consulting Engineers, uh, one thousand North Ninth Street, Grand Junction, Colorado. So I heard basically three different themes tonight and I want to address probably the most important of, of these themes and it's the validity of the study. So for somebody to come up here and say that studies aren't valid, this doesn't make any sense to me. And I want to explain to you why it doesn't make sense to me and why I just want to educate the public to know that that engineers are reviewed consistently by our peers. So first of all, we all know that getting that engineering degree isn't very easy and getting the license is even harder. What we, what they don't tell us in school is that if we go into engineering, that every single document that we prepare is going to be peer reviewed by up to four to ten licensed engineers who all have a duty to their communities and for the safety of the population to look for deficiencies and to bring them forward if they see any. So I imagine every single one of you sitting up there would feel much better about going to the doctor if you knew that after your doctor's evaluation of you, he was going to be peer reviewed by four other people. And that they had the opportunity to literally take his license away if he, if he made it an egregious mistake. So that's the world that Robert and I live in. I will tell you that this traffic study was prepared by me. It was peer reviewed by, um, one of our other employees, um, who works part-time for us. And she was the, a transportation engineer for the city of Grand Junction. It was reviewed by the city of Fruta engineer. It was reviewed by Mesa County's transportation engineer, Daniel Larkin, and it was reviewed by Robert. So at no time did we find or receive comments from any of those reviewers saying that something's invalid. Every once in a while, we'll get comments saying, could you evaluate a different component, which we do. So first of all, I want to say that you should have confidence when an engineer stamps uh, an engineering document like has been submitted and prepared and is part of your package. So that's the first point that I want to make. The, the second theme was growth. And one of the comments was that we don't take into account other developments. As, as part of the traffic engineering evaluation, that's, that's one of the items right there in the table of contents. You look at the report and it's going to talk about growth. So we use data that is supplied by our local transportation uh, engineering regional group to, to evaluate and determine what growth rates we apply to different roads throughout Mesa County. We're fortunate in Mesa County to, to have such a thorough database and constant updates on how to manage and adjust for growth. So we may not specifically take into account a specific subdivision that is going on during that process because that's already taken care of in that section of the traffic study that talks about growth and growth factors. So when we put those growth factors into our traffic study, we're increasing the traffic in this instance, a hundred and sixty percent. So we are definitely accounting for future growth over a period of twenty years. The next part, the next thing that I heard was distribution and distribute, uh, the, no one ever said that, but that's what this means. So in our study, we're saying that most of our traffic is really going to go to the east. And it's going to go down nineteen road and go to K road. And we do that for a reason. We want to kind of evaluate the worst case scenario for K road and nineteen road intersection. But we recognize that that's probably not going to happen. Some of our traffic is probably going to go through Brandon Estates. And I know that's going to happen because ten to twelve percent of Brandon Estates traffic we're projecting is going to go through this new project. So the same amount of traffic that is going to come from Brandon Estates, it's, it's reasonable to believe that that same volume probably is going to come from this project through Brandon Estates. So think about the, the specifics of that number. That's fifteen cars in the morning during the peak hour and seventeen cars in the evening during the peak hour. I wouldn't necessarily call that a huge increase in traffic for either subdivision, for the proposed subdivision or for Brandon Estates. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Eric. This project, and in summary, um, it, it meets your comprehensive plan. It meets your land use code. Um, we have worked with staff to bring a great project, uh, to you tonight. Staff has reviewed this and recommends approval as well as your planning commission. Um, and we again would respectfully request your approval of this project as it's been presented to you tonight. And, um, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
All right, thank you. All right, who would like to start? Anyone? All right. I'll, I'll start with a couple of questions then to get us rolling on that. And it may or not, well, it may partly be related to you, but part of it to Dan. Uh, so Dan, I know one of the questions was talking about the, the two roads from Brandon Estates going into the subdivision and um, I guess I, I want to hear why in, in some old neighborhoods do we build stub outs for um, future development or how does that relate to?
Future development or how does that relate to it? And I know, Robert, you may be able to answer some of that because you were worked on that neighborhood as well, correct? I don't know if you want to answer that, Dan, or if you want Robert to answer that. Or, oh, Sam, all right, Sam will do that.
I'm a long way back here. So Sam Atkins, city engineer, we. There's a property immediately to the southwest of this. That property is pretty expensive, we don't really see the stubbing a street to that property is going to make any sense. And any other stub would be to the properties to the north that don't appear to be very developable, they're not agricultural lands. And so that's why we did not stub or provide those provisions for stubs to those properties.
All right, and my my first part of that question is why do we stub from like older neighborhoods in as far as for planning? For future growth.
So define stub for me.
So basically a dead end realm that that would be a future connection into a future property that's being developed. So Brandon Estates is it is it Meyer, which is the one that's going north, Brandon? The Brandon Drive is technically stubbed to the north. Into the Bernhady property, what we do is we don't want everybody to go out. And be locked in, I can't get from one neighborhood to the other without going out onto the major roads. There needs to be interconnectivity between subdivisions and that is in our code.
All right, that answers, I guess, my my first question with that. The other one would be for staff. What's the normal procedure because I heard about construction traffic as far as? Do we not open up roads until their neighborhood's complete or what is the normal process for that?
A lot of times those roads are from stubs from the previous subdivisions. In this particular case, I think we can. Keep those stubs closed through a certain number of filings until that one singular access does not make sense anymore. And I I'm not aware of a filing plan as far as how many units are going to go in at any given time. But certainly we can keep those closed for a certain period of time.
All right, I'll ask Robert that question, then how does how would that affect the filings that you guys are going to be doing?
The intent is to complete all of the infrastructure at once and then go in and plat by filing, but we could certainly work with staff. To see what could be accommodated to keep those as close for, you know, as long as possible. Obviously, we have to follow again the land use code, which has specific triggers based upon number of units. You know, and additional access points are needed to be brought online, something that we would absolutely be willing to talk with staff about.
All right. The other question I had is the widening of nineteen roads, you guys are going to have one, you're going to have a turn lane. Does that run the whole length of that property or is it just at the access point?
It's just at the access point, a lot of the widening though will take place. For the majority of the eastern boundary of the property with nineteen road, so.
You say that again, I missed that, I apologize.
There's a three hundred and thirty foot transition taper that runs from the. South into a three hundred and thirteen foot deceleration lane. And then an additional redirect taper to the north of that, so. That all told is about approximately fourteen hundred feet of roadwork that would need to be done on nineteen road. And the turn lane design is one of those elements that we're currently working with city of Fruta. Engineering as well as Mesa County Transportation Engineering, that design.
All right, then one other thing I heard was talking about, I think. More or less traffic control or speed, like speed bumps was one of the things because I know with a lot of neighborhoods, we. Put in elements to help slow traffic, is that something you guys have considered adding to your plan between the two subdivisions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that actually is and and was one of the things that was discussed with staff up front. Mr. Atkins had requested, you'll notice on the plan. That northern road of Myers, how it has that jog in it, if you will, which is actually a traffic calming. Measure that we worked on together with staff and so, no, we didn't contemplate speed bumps. But we did talk about traffic.
How does that, sorry, how does that jogging out part work? I mean, on on the paper, it doesn't like it's all that different.
Sure. The introduction has been proven through various studies that the the introduction of. Horizontal misalignments on roads causes people to. Instinctively slow down versus if you're on a straightaway. And Myers Lane is the the street between the two projects that would have the greatest straightaway, if you will. Because the other southern road comes and stubs in and then you have to make, you know, a turn. And that's why staff had requested that horizontal jog in in Myers Lane.
But I'm hearing you're not opposed to other elements to help slow traffic, is that correct? You're not opposed to other elements that would help slow traffic?
No.
Okay. All right, Heather, you asked one question, you want to, that's all I've got for right now. Do you have other questions you want to?
Dave brought up the that intersection and. I totally understand it, like I'll cruise on through there like I'm in the country because it kind of feels like you're in the country, but you're not, you're still in town.
You wanted to find that intersection, just so we know.
Sorry, yeah, nineteen to K, what uh, what is the process to sort of? Put in a four way stop there, is that that based on traffic, do we have to?
So one of the one of the review review comments that we had was to evaluate the warrants for a four way stop. Their consultant can do that.
And I know in a lot of our subdivisions on these north, south roads, we get these. Fence canyons, is there a fence that's going to be around this? Required by the HOA or by, is there going to be a privacy fence against that road?
Yes, there will be.
But, Mr. Counselor, there's a fifty foot. Half street right away dedication. And with an additional, I believe it's twenty foot landscape strip, so that fence will not be right up against the roadway.
And the, I think I see the the trail connector, is it, is this the tract E, tract F and then connecting there with the little green space?
Yes, yes, so there's a north, south detached trail on the west side of the project between. The existing Brandon Estates subdivision and our development that traverses and then runs east, west. So there's a a off street pathway, if you will, that would connect between the two parks and then that trail. Connection to nineteen road, which in the future, hopefully we would have multimodal connection points for trails. Nineteen road.
That's all the questions I have for now, I'll probably have more as. My thoughts get jarred by other people.
All right. Let's go on this side.
I I'm, I wanted to ask, how many units are in Brandon Estates? Hundred and twelve.
All right, well, we're going to have to ask you not to speak because we're, you've already had your public comment time, so this is open for council and the applicant. Go ahead, James.
Do you know?
We'll look that up and get back to you.
Thanks. Because then the reason I had I ask is that they had mentioned the amount of green space due to the amount of. Property that's there and I was kind of trying to correlate. Because I I do appreciate that you added the green space, it does seem like it's still. Quite minimal and that was just something that I would just want to correlate with what how Brandon Estates had affected with their four percent. And another thing, and I might be crazy here. But what is? The access being such an issue? What about Powis? Having an opening to nineteen road too, is that just completely out of the realm of possibility or is that? I'm sure it's been considered and I just want to throw that up in the air and and because people are talking about access. Yeah, very good point.
And Robert, I can answer that. So that was, that was as our code and the classification of nineteen road is ultimately. Way down the road, but ultimately is going to be an enhanced travel corridor, it's not going to be a small road. And that spacing would be too close either to the intersection or to.
That's that's kind of what I figured, Sam, but I just wanted to throw it out there, thank you.
So a hundred and twenty-one units in Brandon Estates.
And then how much green space, that was, I think, the other question you asked, wasn't it?
We'll get back to you on that one too.
All right, James, other other questions you've got or comments?
No, I and I am concerned about the access, it would be nice if there was another one because of the fact of. Emergency vehicles and stuff getting in there, that seemed, this little area down here seems a little scary to me and I could see some. Some reason why that those issues are being brought up, I was curious if there is a. Like, what is this?
Say down here, you mean the south side of that?
Towards K road. I could. I mean, is there a way to get down to K road, another access, I just feel like that might alleviate. Something if there was another access point.
So that's that's too close as well, we did, we did have review comments from lower valley fire, the fire marshal. And his comment was the two hammerheads that were originally approached, proposed. Now we have or the applicant has more of a loop type system, so you're. The only way this entrance would be blocked is if it's in that one lot width and then there's other accesses to the west. For emergency purposes, so we did not receive concern from this access.
All right, thanks, and I and I figured as much, I just wanted to get that out in the air so that we could address those issues.
And council member Williams, it's two point nine five acres of open space and that includes the public trails.
That's in this new one that we're talking about or in Brandon?
In Brandon.
So there there's quite a bit more happening over in Brandon as far as green goes.
Well, that's true, that's trails and everything, though, right?
Well, we got these trails here, I mean, what would, what's the numbers that we're looking at in the new one?
I mean. But that doesn't.
But well, that's not including trails, but I still don't think that's going to add up two and a half acres.
Like including this little salt wash. Be equal to this as well.
Well, and this project wasn't designed based upon a certain percentage point, the land use code allows. Within the density by design bonus sections, one of the options is in fact open space and that. Triggers at twenty percent of your overall project in order for. That bonus point to be allowed in this instance, the developer chose. Of the diversity of housing type as well as the off off street trails to meet that.
Questions, James?
So council member Williams, it's. One point seven three acres.
Thanks, Dan.
And I just want to point out for the for the benefit of the the council that Brandon Estates is a planned development, it's not a straight zone subdivision. So it's it's not going through the same approval criteria that that this application is going through presently.
All right, thank you, Dan. All right, Janine?
Yeah, I just, first of all, thank you all for your comments and everybody's time, you all have had an opportunity to have. Many, maybe several discussions back and forth based on planning commissions and various meetings and this is. Really our first time to listen and hear. All of the comments and concerns and it it's important, I think, to all of us to hear your voices. And so I want to thank you for that, I do wonder. I I don't think anyone was necessarily questioning the validity of the traffic study, but I am curious if after hearing again. Some of the concerns, if you do feel like, and I know you've already made compromises and already made some adjustments, but I'm curious of after tonight. You've heard anything else that you feel like there could be some more give? Or is this all something you've already heard and given what you can and now we're just hearing it for sake of, you know, the public to for us to hear? The public as well.
Yeah, we feel that the various permutations that this plan has gone through. Over the last, you know, year, year and a half. And what the culmination of that is what's before you tonight, which is a good plan. That meets your comprehensive plan and your land use code, I haven't heard anything. Tonight that would really make me pause and cause me to question the plan that's before you tonight.
Thank you, and then I also wonder comparatively to what we normally see in. Density for downtown homes, how does that compare to this? I don't know if Dan or might have just, I'm just a little interested about the feel of this subdivision versus what it might feel like. Across the street.
Sure, I mean, if you look at, and certainly Mr. Karas could speak to this more, but. If you look at the Old Town Fruta, which is the the smaller lots with alleys. It's it's somewhat similar to what you're seeing. With Rose Creek subdivision and there's areas that are denser and and, you know. We looked at some of these, some of these densities as we were going through the comprehensive plan update. So we could understand, you know, what is, what does four drilling units per acre look like, what does six, what does eight? And so that's why that community residential zone. Was modified in the comprehensive plan as it was to carry it from that four to eight, giving a base density of six and Rose Creek is five point seven. Drilling units per acre.
And so can you imagine that it might feel? In a sim, I know that they're like duplexes, I know it's not exactly like, but I'm just, is the hope to sort of emulate that kind of feel in this subdivision?
Yes.
All right, I'm up, Matthew. So all my, most of my stuff has been kind of already addressed by council. Two things, hopefully I don't step in it too much. There was a comment, how do you calculate about property value loss and this is maybe a question for staff. Which is, is there any methodology to evaluate property value on adjacent neighborhoods?
It's not a criteria for approval, but and we don't evaluate that when we get the subdivision applications.
Then the last one was David, gentleman, my name, David made a comment. Which I agree with, which is, you know. Personally, this is a little bit much for me, but this project meets all the comprehensive and zoning plans. So based on that, the developers. Design is to the codes that we have and I think there is maybe future conversation to look at those codes to see if that is indeed. Are the direction which we should go, but the developer has met all existing. In my opinion, all existing codes.
But it's more than that, Matthew, I mean, we've spent the last, you know, the the two years that we've been on council together, we've been. We were part of revising the land use code.
Great, and so I'm saying this meets those land use code.
Yeah, I know, but I'm, I guess I'm saying. Sorry, were you done? I don't want to interrupt.
Please.
Okay. I think this is the time. Where. Adhering to our camp comprehensive plan and our land use code and what our vision has been. Is is butted up against, we're not going to make people happy. And this is the time to to be brave and be bold and in my opinion. Flipping the percentages just perpetuates the problem of nothing but single family detached homes in Fruta. Which is pricing so many people out of the market. Beginning teachers can't buy in Fruta, they're teaching here in our schools and they're living elsewhere, I know, because they're my friends. And our retail workers can't buy. And our retail workers can't buy in Fruta. They're buying somewhere else. So while it is really difficult that we, we, we've all said, we want the small town feel to stay the same. And then we're butted up against a reality of Colorado has been discovered and Fruta has been discovered. And, and the way, the reasons we live here, other people want to enjoy and we can't just close the gates. So when we talk about compatibility, there's nowhere in Fruta that this place would be compatible with because we're mostly single family detached homes. And the vision that we've set forth is we want our people who work here to be able to live here. Now, is there a guarantee that every single unit here is going to, you know, be within a price range that a starting teacher could? I, I don't set those prices. You don't set those prices. I've been instructed that in a free market, the market sets the prices. That's, that's one of my learning curves in the last two years, right? Because I wanted you to guarantee, guarantee me that this is only going to cost $200,000 so that someone can buy this, right? And that's not the way the free market works. But if we do nothing but build single family detached homes, we're only going to further limit people's access to living in Fruta. And the great thing about our small town feel is it's inclusivity. So I, I think for, for me, it's more than I'm, I'm going to vote yes, because it met our land use code and it meets our comprehensive plan. I'm going to vote yes, because it meets my vision for what I want in Fruta. And the unfortunate reality is that's not going to make everyone happy. But I didn't get elected to try to make everybody happy because that's impossible. I got elected to try to have an understanding, a very wide, general understanding of how a municipality functions and to try to make decisions for 10, 20, 30 years down the road. So I, from, that's what I meant. I, I understood you were saying, you know, it, it meets all our.
All our land use.
Does.
Anything else? I think, you know, at a, if there's a, it doesn't impact this, I think there's room for conversation moving down the road. Are these the, the right land use codes? I think that's always open for discussion as well as it always should be open for discussion.
Well, and it is, it is, but I, you know, I served on planning commission that whole year and a half that we were looking at the land use code. So, so maybe I'm a little more familiar with it because I saw it once at plan commission and we hashed it out there. And then I saw it a second time here at city council. And all of the requirements for density bonuses were batted around for hours and hours and meetings and meetings in, in planning commission and then also here as well. So I don't know, I, I feel I'm going to be hated for this, but I felt really excited that we're, that we're trying to do something besides just single family homes because we're never going to solve the problem if that's all we build.
All right, anything else to add?
Thank you.
All right. Does anybody have after other discussion, any further questions or comments related to this?
I, I did want to bring up a point that someone, and I felt terrible. I can't remember what their name was. But someone did bring up that originally that the planning commission, the planning board turned it down. And I was just curious if anyone from staff was in on that? Do you guys, is that maybe not true? Or does anybody have anything that they can enlighten us upon that?
Uh, Councilmember Williams, it was a failed motion. It was essentially tied. And so they would have to vote again to render a decision. It's in the minutes. It's in the.
Oh, really?
And commit.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I guess I didn't see that when I looked through it.
So, I mean, just to go a little bit farther, there was a lot of questions being asked back and forth with city attorney Geiger and the staff just contemplating what the approval criteria is saying in relationship to the comments that were made. And so they rendered a decision, a vote was cast and it was a tied three, three vote. And so they went through it again with, not necessarily because it was going to be a denial, but with the insertion of the council contemplating whether or not, uh, open space would be incorporated into the development.
So the open space was the, was the issue at, at hand. So they've addressed that.
Doesn't necessarily represent all the things that were mentioned in the hearing, but that's what they were deliberating on. And, and just a quick go back to a question that was asked earlier about lot sizes. The old Fruta town site plot was about 2,500 square foot lots within the downtown. When we went through the concept comprehensive plan process, we looked at like the maximum allowed densities within particular zone districts, community residential being that four to six, like Robert mentioned, being built out and at the observed density of about 3.62 units per acre. And then what was also asked by either council member Purser or council member Williams is like, what about the downtown? And at that time, the maximum density it was allowed was about 12, or was about 12 drilling units per acre with the build out of the downtown at 3.8 buildings per acre. Since we have to contemplate that there's commercial land uses that are within the, within that zone district. Part of the reason for some of those changes is that like it's, you know, kind of widely known that it's an unhealthy land use practice to have your downtown built out at really similar densities as your residential zone districts. So that was a part of the impetus, you know, that the comp plan contemplated that bled into the land use code update process.
Thanks, Dan.
All right. I had one more question because we did receive an email that you guys gave us from Aaron Hancy. And he does serve, he lives in the property that's adjacent to this, but he also serves on our planning commission. He's asked about the sidewalk. So is that sidewalk going to go from Brandon Estates all the way down to this one? Or is there going to be a break with the private property that's between those? Sam?
So there's, there's only one property that is, it is west of there that the right way doesn't exist because it wasn't part of some other subdivision. So the, I believe it's two properties west of this subdivision will have curb gutter and sidewalk in front of it. But there will be a break in the furthest west before you get to Brandon Estates.
All right. And the other question was then that'll have all the, the drainage and all that associated with it?
Yes, it will.
All right. Just want to make sure we address that as well. Are there any other questions or comments before we, I request or ask for a motion? All right, hearing none, then do we have a motion on this item?
I move, we approve the proposed Rose Creek preliminary plan with the condition that all review comments and issues identified be adequately resolved with the final plat application.
Second, is that the right motion or were you reading it out of the planning commission notes?
Would you state your name for the record?
Sorry. Hi, I'm the city attorney, Mary Elizabeth Geiger. I would ask if you could amend your motion to include the revised proposed plan that you guys have in front of you tonight? Because that wasn't part of the original application. So just that it's clear that that's what you're voting.
So I move to approve the revised proposed Rose Creek preliminary plan with the conditions that all review comments and issues identified be adequately resolved within the final plat application.
Second. Counselor Cry?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Bremen?
Yes.
Counselor Purser?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
No.
Motion passes four to one.
All right. Well, thank you everyone for being here. We appreciate your public comments. With that, we're going to move into our legislative hearings. Uh, so our first one is resolution 2022 dash 23. I'm ending the 2022 budget and we've got our assistant to city manager Shannon Bass in here to present on this. Amy, are you gonna? Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, good evening.
I'm up now.
I'll wait for Councilman Miller.
I know. I didn't like her sitting out there. It was bugging me.
Well, she hadn't heard the.
Yeah.
She hadn't heard, wasn't here for the whole conversation.
Apologies for my tardiness.
All right. Still got a wild catch right now. Just trying to come down.
They didn't want to stay for this.
All right, Shannon, you're up. I don't know if we'll have public comments.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Shannon Vossan, assistant to the city manager. As always, thank you for the opportunity to present. The resolution before you amends the 2022 annual budget with supplemental appropriations in the general fund, the public places fund, the sewer fund and the fleet maintenance fund. As kind of outlined in the cover sheet, this budget amendment appropriates $3,000 of unspent grant revenues from the arts and society grant that we received for the Wellspring project last year to be used for a similar project this year partnering with Rivers Edge West. Um, in the public places fund, we have $20,000 in grant revenue that we received from the Carow Tourism Office to build a three to four miles of entry level, single track trail up at the North Fruta Desert. The sewer fund, we have an insurance claim of $57,675 to do repairs on the canvas that was damaged due to high winds out there at the wastewater reclamation facility. And in the fleet maintenance fund, we have two separate insurance payments of $17,000, $17,250 to repair two vehicles that were damaged in automobile accidents, 3106, which is a Parks truck and 8418, which is Chief Kraus's car. Revenues from insurance claims are available to offset.
We're just here to talk about budget. We're not here to talk about.
Incident report on the.
I was trying to emphasize the importance of the repairs and thus the importance of the budget amendment. Mr. Mayor and some council.
Wait, so what you're saying it's more important because it was his car than another one?
Absolutely. Somebody hit him. Yeah. On a lighter note, staff does recommend approval of this budget amendment and always happy to answer any questions if the council has any. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council.
All right, with that, we're going to open it up to public comment. So is there anybody online, I guess, because there's nobody else in the room? Do you see anybody online that wants to ask a question? Shannon shaking his head, no. All right, then we're going to bring you back to council. Are there any questions on this related to budget?
I have a question on this budget. If somebody hit Chief Kraus, wouldn't that be coming out of their insurance, not ours?
It says that it, their proceeds are available to offset.
We're spending it and then we're going to get it back.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
See, he needs a car now, not when the insurance decides to settle.
Um, it is, uh, he, it is coming. It is a SIRS, a claim that we're making because the motorist wasn't insured at the time.
All right, with that, do we have any other questions or comments or a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move, we adopt resolution 2022 dash 23, amend the 2022 budget to appropriate funds in the general fund, the public places fund, the sewer fund and the fleet maintenance fund for the Wellspring project, trail construction, biosolid building repairs at this wastewater treatment facility and vehicle repair maintenance.
A second.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Bremen?
Yes.
Counselor Purser?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Cry?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Motion passes six, zero.
All right, our next legislative hearing is resolution 2022 dash 25. And we're going to have our city planner or director, Dan Karas presenting on this one. Planning director, let's make sure I get that title right.
I really am a planner by trade though, so.
Very shanker dude, we know.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. My name is Dan Karas. City planner for the record. I'd like to just formally enter my PowerPoint presentation into the record. This is resolution 2022, 25, which is the dogleg one annexation. It's got the parcel number and the application number. And presenter as a part of this first slide, again, this is not the same process as a, as a normal annexation proceeding. This is just the determining of its eligibility. So we really just are looking for the compliance with the applicable state statutes and our code language that determine whether or not a project is or a property is eligible for annexation. So just a quick recap, the statutes require four consecutive weeks no, notice in a public, in the public paper. That's July 8th, 15th, 22nd, 29th. And that the property meets a one-sixth contiguity. And the applicant has provided us a annexation survey. You can kind of see those hatched marks that are surrounding the property that is approximately one acre. You're even in the city limits. And so that's how that meets the statutory requirements. Of course, like, once it goes through the ordinance process for annexation, it has its own set of approval criteria. But this is just to determine whether or not it is eligible. And then the first reading on tonight's agenda was for a dogleg one and two, which sets the hearing dates where we will contemplate the code sections that are required. And that is really all I have for you. And this is the staff recommendation to approve resolution 2022, 25.
All right, with that, we're going to open it up to public comments. Deb, do you want to look and see? All right, with that, we'll close public comment, bring you back to council. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
I move, we approve our resolution 2022, 25, a resolution of the Fruta City Council finding approximately one acre of property located at parcel two, six, nine, seven, dash, two, one, three, dash, zero, zero, dash, zero, seven, eight, eligible to be annexed into the city of Fruta.
Counselor Bremen? Counselor Purser?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Cry?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes six, zero.
All right, with that, we're going to move into our third legislative hearing. It's resolution 2022 dash 26. And we've got our city planner, Dan Karas presenting on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Stan Karas, city planner for the record. This is a resolution 22, 2022, 26, the dogleg two, same legal notice that's required under the statute and the necessary contiguity that has been met under the statutes. And the hearing dates were set for the ordinance process earlier, earlier this evening on the consent agenda, which the public, it takes place October 4th. This is the annexation survey that was done. Again, the hatched marks that are along the I and a half road alignment are the contiguity that is a part of this subject site. In reference to the location, essentially directly to the south of this is the Adobe Creek Golf Course. And so that's just be an extension of a road that's been used as a driveway presently. And the parcel is about four point, or four acres and change. And that concludes my presentation and you've got staff recommendation on slide.
All right, with that, we're going to open it up to public comment. Is there anybody that'd like to make comment? Shannon, do you see anybody online?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor.
All right, with that, we're going to close public comment, bring you back to council. Are any questions, comments, or do we have a motion?
I move to approve resolution 2022 dash two, six, a resolution of the Fruta City Council finding approximately 4.54 acres of property located at parcel number two, six, nine, seven, dash, two, one, three, dash, zero, zero, dash, zero, nine, four, eligible to be annexed into the city of Fruta.
Second.
Yep. Counselor Purser?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Cry?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Bremen?
Yes.
Motion passes six, zero.
All right, thanks, Dan. All right, with that, we don't have any administrative agenda, so we're going to move into city managers' report.
All right, thank you, mayor, members of council. Just a reminder that this Thursday is the chamber business after hours hosted by Family Health West at 5:30 and that'll be at their, at the, at the hos, at the new, at the hospital in their physical therapy at 300 West Ottley. And we, as a large, just a reminder, if you're interested in going, let me know or let Deborah, I know. We do have free passes for those because we, as part of our very large sponsorship of, of the chamber that comes with that.
So you mean me just showing up every time and just saying?
I think that works. I think that works too. That's all I have for tonight, except ready to jump in and talk, talk more when, after Heather go. After you.
All right, no, you're not next yet. So, well.
Mr. Mayor.
Also reports and actions. So before we go into executive session, are there any reports? We're going to start on this end down here and take the easy ones first. Matthew?
Yes, sir.
All right, Janine?
No.
James? James?
I just. Bastard or whatever the word is. Mike's done. That's never happened.
Yeah, I've had none before. Maybe you missed it.
Yeah, when he's on vacation. Don't you remember those? He is on vacation and Matthew ran the meeting. Everything got done so much faster. I don't know what it was. So, all right.
I have nothing. I was gone.
All right, well, I'm gonna go. I usually go last, but I'm gonna save that for Heather. Um, I did meet, it's been three weeks ago, I think, CBDG. And I don't know if everybody's familiar with that. I know Heather is because she used to serve on that one, but it's a block grant that Mesa County gets. Um, and so one of the things we're working on uh over the last year and we're moving into the next couple of years on that is how to fund education, especially for daycare workers. So reimbursing them uh to get the proper certification and everything else because daycare is a major problem. Uh, ha- filling those needs uh with that. And so that's one of the things we're talking about. And then we're talking about adopting the the plan um from Mesa County as far as relating to that specific part of um how that block grant relates to um the public improvement uh with that, with jobs. So that's our main discussion. That's our main focus. We meet quarterly. So it's, you know, something that we, you know, are continually being updated on, you know, where the organizations that we're helping with the education side and when we're that funding's uh, how it's being spent. So that's the only meeting I had, and so I'll turn it over to Ken.
Um, all my meetings are forthcoming. Uh, the youth action council did have a retreat like a week and a half, two weeks ago now. Uh, it sounded like a a big success. I was out of town. Uh, they have their meeting on the nineteenth and I'll be there.
Um, you heard.
They win?
Planning councils, yes. Go Cats. My kid was only on the sidelines for a few minutes, so that was fun. Um, planning, I mean, you just heard the biggest thing. Um, and then historical preservation, we did have an exciting uh, they they are reprinting their coloring book, which is super cute. Um, and has kind of been set aside for quite a while because they couldn't, they they weren't seeking funding. Um, and we we pulled that together with uh the partnership with the chamber. Kayla helped us get um a lot of community support. Everybody, man, just really pulled together. And we were able to get enough money to print five thousand coloring books and their original goal was only like twelve hundred. So that was super cool. Um, and then they're gonna start rolling out some programs to go along with that, like to integrate with the schools. Um, getting into classrooms and doing a little bit of fruit of history with the kids. So I'm really excited about that. And then they also have their, um, it's been a busy month for them. They have their, uh, I guess we should say we have our historical, um, what is it? Like the, yeah, history fair. Thank you. Yeah, so at at the uh fall fest, they're gonna be in the calvocade. Will be in the calvocade um with some really cool displays. I really would encourage you guys to stop in. They're gonna have some oral history recordings from, um, you know, all the way from back like nineteen eighty. So people that have been, you know. Well, no, I just, so like, no, 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 no.
Back to nineteen eighty.
Some of these people were close to a hundred years old that they were recording. So that actually puts us back.
Eighteen eighties.
Yeah, I mean, they're 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 remembering things from when Fruta was very first. It's it's pretty cool. That's exciting.
I remember back in nineteen eighty when Kiss was over.
Listen, some of us weren't alive, okay?
All right, is that is that what you've got? Because we're gonna move into Heather if that is before Matthew interrupts one more time, right? All right, Heather, you've got.
Well, I've.
Any reports and action?
Missed arts and culture board. And since April, when I got on the arts and culture board, I have attended exactly zero arts and culture board meetings because something has always come up. So my apologies to the arts and culture board people if you're listening, and I will send an email. Which which brings me to my second topic of, um, I, you know, informed all of you earlier this week of my intentions to resign city council. And I have my Kleenex here because I'm a crier. Um, you know, this is, this is not anything to do with um evenings like tonight where we just have difficult decisions to make. Um, or any other reason other than I I got my dream job. And I didn't know when I ran for council that I'd be getting my dream job in four years. And I really wanna give a hundred percent to this probably last phase of my career. Um, and there have been many nights where I've uh I come to various meetings or events for for council or boards and commissions and and my teammates have had to pick up football games and volleyball games and tennis matches and so on and so forth. And and that doesn't seem fair to them, nor does it seem um why I pursued, you know, this position. So um, I have enormously enjoyed my time here, even the difficult nights where we were all open hearted and vulnerable for each other. And I have so enjoyed the learning that I have gotten. Yeah, whatever.
Yeah, we've got a little bit more to go.
So I I'm, I just, I can't, I can't manage. I think I'm superwoman and I think I can manage doing eighteen thousand things until my body starts breaking down and my acupuncturist says, your adrenals are shot. What are you gonna do about that? And so, you know, I've got to take care of of myself. Um, and then there's this thing about my husband too. He kind of likes seeing me every once in a while. So, um, so I, it is my intention to resign. Uh, you know, Mike asked me when uh probably tonight, but I also wanted to ask what what was coming up or what your needs were. And I know Mary Elizabeth is here, and so I haven't put out any official announcement, but I wanted to hear from you guys.
All right, well, I'll start before Mike does. How's that? So just to give a process on how we've done it in the past, because I've sat through two of these now. And so normally we open it up for applications. And so we allow so many days for applications, probably two weeks would be my guess. Um, for that, I don't remember what we did in the past. Um, just to give us a timeline. Then we gotta schedule a time to meet whether in the past, we've got anywhere from, I think, eight the first time to twelve applications and we interviewed everybody. So depending if we get twenty, do we want to interview everybody? So those are questions we're gonna have to.
Did would did all of council interview them or was it just a smaller?
All the council, because we're the ones making the decision on who's sitting up here. So, I mean, we're all peers in this respect. So I think it's very important that we don't have a subcommittee that it's it's full council, uh, just for transparency wise.
The person who's resigning or no?
No.
Probably not because she's off council at that.
I think the time starts after I officially resign. That's.
So I'm just trying to give a a time, uh, a process on how we've done it. So that way we know a timeline for what Mike's gonna go over as far as, because when Bob Fuller resigned, he resigned like in November. And we asked him to put it back to uh to February and he served because he had to leave town because of uh family health issue. And that put it into the timeline of a normal April election. So Heather's is nowhere near an election time, so we're gonna have to interview and place that. So we have to schedule it. So that's why before you give your date, we wanna work this out on what it is. Um, uh, then we have to schedule a time for all of us to get together and set interviews. If we've got twenty, do we want to narrow it down? So those questions we'll have to ask, you know, in a normal interview. Is it gonna be twenty minutes or a half hour each? If you've got twelve people and you've got a half hour, we've got six hours of interview time. So do, so those are things, and we've had a hard time getting schedules for all of us to get together. So that's, that's gonna be the first.
So and and my team at Grand Junction High School has been very supportive. Um, the they s- they actually see great value in me staying on and we're trying to encourage me to stay on too. And they could work, you know, and I was like, ah. So, you know, if if it's, if you're looking at your schedules and it's just not gonna be possible for you guys to collectively get these all scheduled within September, October, then, you know, let me know. My my team at Junction is supportive if I need to stay on at longer to help facilitate you guys having the time to be able to do the interview so that you can make the best selection possible.
That's what I guess. First thing I wanna say is I don't wanna definite date commitment tonight until we know, I think, what everybody's schedule is. I think that's the first thing I'm I'm asking of you.
Yep.
Um, and then Mike, you can go through like kind of the logistics and Mary Elizabeth can help with kind of what that timeline looks like. Just so we're all aware of, you know, what kind of some of the constraints we're I we are under.
Yeah, the charter is very specific. So in this case, from the date of resignation, there's a sixty day period that city council needs to appoint a replacement to finish.
Appointment has to be at a council meeting, correct? Or a special, I guess we could call a special meeting too.
Right.
Correct. Okay, just yeah, just so we're aware. I mean, because we could call a special meeting if we had, and it could be remote. It doesn't have to be in person, correct? As long as we're allowing the public, as long as we're, right. Okay, all right. Go ahead, Mike.
If if you don't do that within sixty days, then you have to have a special election within ninety days, which.
What would that cost us?
Could be fifteen to twenty thousand dollars to do a special election.
Just so everybody's aware of that.
But it's very common that.
There, I'm worth it, but let's not do.
We hit the vote on your resignation?
Um, I don't think so.
Basically, the most common approach and the the it does not specify the process because it gives city council the ability to create the process to to meet that timeline. Uh, the most common process that's that occurs not only in Fruta in the past is what Joel, what the mayor mentioned. Um, but that's the most probably likely the most common throughout the state of Colorado. It's a accept applications, choose how you're going to interview and then have a discussion uh among council about what your criteria is. Of course, you're thinking of things of, you all represent various groups of the community. You wanna, you wanna keep that um is is as much as you can. Uh, those those viewpoints, you wanna, you wanna think of makeup of the council, you wanna, all those different pieces of criteria. And that whatever you come up with, again, this is not a a staff thing. I don't participate in it. As a city manager, we help post everything for you. We're not in the interviews with you. That's purely the city council. We can collect those.
To the public, I apologize.
Yes, they are. And 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 they have to be uh open to the public. Um, last time we didn't have anybody sit in and we did kind of put a note to all the, there were eleven applicants at the last one, eleven interviews. We let everybody know that while it's a uh that it is a public meeting, so there could be people in the audience. Um, uh, but you could, applicants could consider, you know, waiting while each person has their. Um, now an applicant could choose to just sit in there and listen because it's a public meeting to all the other interviews. But um, that's the nature of 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 these public meetings. Um, last time, uh, the this occurred, the last time it occurred is when the mayor was elected mayor. So he was two years into his his term, that election, he won um uh to become the mayor. So uh, as soon as he was sworn in, we knew we had a vacancy in his uh council seat. That was not part of the election because it wasn't vacant until he became the mayor. So they collected the applications, um, eleven, eleven applied. Um, that was just under two weeks. But there, um, if you remember, the council at the time was trying to meet the training schedule. Can we get someone on before the training schedule was started? So you have sixty days. I mean, you could choose two weeks, you could choose thirty days. You had a set a time for uh uh interview. Um, I'm not recommending thirty. I'm just saying you could pick your timeframe, set a day for all the interviews. I think it's very good to have when we post it, the interviews are gonna be on this day. Um, uh, if we are trying to then with all the applicants figure out when they can meet and when you all can meet, we might not make make sixty days.
I think that's what we did last time.
Last time, we just said the interviews are gonna be on this day, so um plan accordingly uh to be able to do that interview.
Were maybe over two days.
Yeah, they could have been like.
Did we do them all in one? Yeah, we did. We both, everybody was on a whole day.
Yeah, actually, I I did look and it was like eight to, or it was, it was, it was a long, it was a long day. It was a whole day up in this.
I remember. That was fast. Um, I mean, I think for mentally, I think it does, but with schedules, that was gonna be the challenging part is, you know.
Yeah, and then and then you could schedule a special meeting, but if you're, if you're, if you're doing a two week timeframe and a day of an interview, I mean, there's plenty of council meetings to just add that on um as well. So uh, it was a special meeting essentially for the interviews. And you had on that item, I think, a discussion at the end, which again, people could be in the in the audience. But after those interviews, you had a uh, you had the interviews as items, then you had a discussion. So you could have a discussion. And then if if you wanted to continue that discussion, it could be at a future meeting um as well, where you make an appointment.
Okay, because it, because it's, are we taking minutes? Because if we're gonna make a motion at the end of interviews, we would have to have meeting minutes.
Last time you just had a discussion, but you you appointed at the regular, the next regular meeting where you where you made the appointment.
Okay.
So there was no vote, there was.
No vote or anything. It's just a, okay.
I think that we had thought maybe we, and I don't not remember exactly, but we thought, oh, we don't wanna interview more than eight, but then we had eleven. It's like, you reject a couple people.
Do we have to follow that same form?
No, no, no.
Well, that's what Mike said. This is up to us on what we want. So if we say we only want to interview four, we can interview four. If we say six, I mean, we can pick that number.
Theory, we could all on our own review application, say, here's our top three.
Right.
And then kind of pull a list of our top five by score or whatever.
Right. Okay. However, we wanna decide, however, we wanna decide to do that.
So it seems, I mean, just thinking from like a teacher lens, will you, this is probably none of my business because I'm the one causing all the problems, but.
Well, you're still on, so you have the right to give your opinion. How's that?
Well, it seems like you need to have some kind of scoring rubric so that if you were determining things individually, um, you were all looking at the same criteria.
So who's who's voting on Heather coming up with that scoring rubric? Saying that you were gonna come up with that for us?
No, I don't think.
All right, I just, I maybe I heard you wrong. Sorry, Heather.
I I would be sort of curious to see how many applicants we get within this, the timeframe we have it open. And then if we have another meeting, decide how many we're gonna interview.
Have that process laid out clearly before we open it up to the public. To say that, agree. To say that we have so many that we're gonna have, we're gonna, we're gonna allow or interview X amount.
And what I handed.
Well, let's say Mary Elizabeth, doesn't matter.
This was just what was used last time. I did not create this.
All the thing is, we get six people apply. We see we're only interviewing five.
Right.
Well, it just seems to me like we get the applications that we get in and then we all, like you say, if we wanna take five and interview them, then we pick between us, like you pick your top five, you pick your top five, I pick mine, and then we could go through and score like. And then interview that five.
No, the or the process is, we say we wanna interview up to six or what, or.
I don't have to say how many you're interviewing. You can just say we're.
But internally, we could say as a group, okay, we wanna, if we get up to six applications, we'll interview them all. Anything over that, then we need to discuss how many we want to interview, because maybe we wanna interview eight. Maybe we wanna interview ten. I I don't, you know, that would be the question is.
What I'm saying is for the posting.
Right, it doesn't matter.
Say these will be the interviews. You don't say where how many you're.
Well, we have to schedule time in that day when what I don't wanna do is I don't wanna sketch, say, oh, yeah, now we're interviewing five. When we have an interview at eight AM, one at eight forty five, then I want it two in the afternoon. I want them all in together, so we have time to discuss while it's fresh. And I mean, I don't wanna, I mean, Ken may want a two hour lunch, but I don't necessarily want it to.
So so a good, uh, just something to suggest, I mean, just you can pick the dates. These can be different. But as an example, we get it posted, you have a date that you'd like to do interviews. And the the deadline for for turning these in is five o'clock before like the next workshop. At the next workshop, we come and we say as of yesterday at five o'clock, you receive these applications. You already have a date for interviews and you pick, you have a discussion or you just pick, we're gonna interview them all or we're gonna interview five of them. On the date you already picked, whenever you preferably tonight, if you're able to. Um, and then we, and then we schedule, we contact the clerk's office contacts, those people who applied. I I will say that part of the application process, we will vet to make sure they are qualified. Because if they're not qualified, there's no reason to interview them, meaning are they a registered voter? Um, all the, you know, there's, there's the qualifications that, yeah, you have to be a certain age, you have to be a registered voter.
Have to live here for twelve months.
If they have a relative that works at the city or is on a border commission, they've gotta make a decision before they go through the process. If and because you can't be on council with a relative working for the city, you can't, um, you can't have a relative on a border commission based on your your um policies for boards and commissions. So that means they could leave and this person could apply.
When is our next workshop?
So that would be the twenty. Yeah, twenty seven.
These in would be the twenty sixth. Get applications in by the twenty sixth, then we could talk about it the twenty seventh at the workshop and then.
You put them twenty third by.
Or so, or sure, yeah, that's days that they need, but.
Because they could get it to us over the weekend and we'd have a chance to review them instead of just, hey, let's, that way it gives us time to talk about it if it comes out. Oh, is it?
Other than that, we're gonna be all the way to another month till we do a workshop, which it doesn't have to be workshop, but it seems like that would be the optimum time.
Yeah. So you could, you could, you know, that, I mean, you could do it as of if you wanted to discuss. So you could you could, you know, that, I mean, you could do it as of if you wanted to discuss who you want to interview, you could do that on the twentieth or the twenty-seventh. It just depends how much time you want to give. For. Submittals.
So I mean, I the bigger question though is when can everybody meet? Because that's going to be the bigger.
You mean for the interview?
Yeah, for the interview because that's the the, I mean, if everybody can meet for the interview on the twenty-second, then we need to make a date sooner than that if, you know. If it's.
September thirtieth, she needs birthday. We could do it then.
Yeah, that's.
It's also.
Nope, that's a football game.
I was gonna say, nope, nope.
Says fruit of more than missing a home football game. You're involved about the whole community.
The homecoming football. Yeah, that's not that's not.
It'd be like a day that's usually a burner day for most of us from seems like Mondays.
I can't do the twenty-sixth. It's Russia.
No, but I'm saying.
No, like the third.
A Monday.
So keep in mind, we have sixty days from when uh Heather officially gives her resignation, so. If you're looking at sixty days, say tonight, it'd be thirty. Yeah, you'd be almost in November. You'd be the thirty-first of, well, not quite the the thirtieth of, you know.
Feel like we could get it done in that period of time.
I know, but we need to find a date now so that way we we don't get booked. So I'm saying we're trying to rush it to be there, but we there may be, you know, October, October tenth or seventeenth or twenty-fourth. It doesn't have to be, you know. The third, we just have.
The tenth is Columbus Day.
Oh, and you got the day off?
Yeah.
We're in the schools out. No, you guys have schools?
School's not out.
It could be the evening. I mean, you could pick a Monday starting at six or.
It's a long day to focus if you're going to have four hours or five hours of interviews. I mean. What about the tenth? That's the question, the tenth.
October tenth?
Yeah.
We can do the tenth.
Anybody have a problem with the ten?
Work for you, Janine.
We'll be there. Work works fine for me.
Yeah.
I was take it off. Yeah. Yeah.
Go to the.
I would have a historic preservation meeting at eleven o'clock, but.
Uh, they'll already have.
I should say.
Arts and culture.
It can always coming open, but I would remote in because I'll be somewhere else, but I am also off that.
I'd rather have you here in person. I think it's. Or.
We important.
I can do any Monday, but the seventeenth.
The tenth, sounds like today.
I think the tenth.
In your calendar now, you have ten, ten.
Ten out of ten.
That's our interview day.
Yep.
And then that the workshop at the end of this. Month is the one that we once you got and you guys can set that deadline or what's going to make it comfortable.
Well, we can we can make it later if we want to, if it's a tenth, we can allow more time if we want more applications.
But we want it to happen at the workshop because.
Want it before the workshop.
Then we can actually sit and talk and really. Because then they can bring it and go, look, this is who you have. And then we go, this is who we want to interview and they can leave the workshop. Knowing who we want to interview.
Right, and then they can schedule those.
And they can schedule a day, so that seems like the best thing. Yeah.
Yeah, because remember, most of you are, there's a lot of people gone on the fourth, so I would not. Plan to discuss it on the.
Right.
What's the fourth?
I don't know, but.
Of October. Well, how many years a lot? How many are going to be?
October. That's Yom Kippur, buddy.
I want to.
I can remote in.
You can remote in. Anybody else can be gone? Is that give me our quorum? Because Heather will officially be resigned.
A second.
Matt wants in, he does.
I mean, this is a religious holiday.
No, I know that. No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying. If we have to reschedule the meeting. That's all I'm saying. I'm not telling you about rescheduling Yom Kippur.
About meeting on the.
No, 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 no.
No, no, you'll be okay to miss.
Majority of us have a meeting on the fourth. We can't have a council meeting because we won't have a majority to vote.
Okay.
That's all I'm. No, I'm not. I'm not saying anything. So. Simidah, simidah. Will we have a quorum because? We'll have two gone and we have three, three out of. Five, so we do have a.
Yeah, we might. We can, if you said you could.
I can.
Remote in.
Remote in. That's three. Is that enough?
Yeah, three is enough because that three is a majority because you you were one short because Heather will no longer. That's correct, right? Just to make sure.
Long as somebody doesn't drop dead. Well, you know.
I don't have to show up because I'm not a voting member.
Voting on the fourth?
Yes.
Saying in general, just an in general meeting.
It's a city council meeting.
It's a city council meeting. So Matthew, I'll give you an example. If tonight we have had three people absent, we couldn't vote on anything. We'd have to reschedule the meeting. So that's all I'm saying on that night is I'm speaking layman. No, no, no.
He really wants to vote on my resignation.
All right, so is everybody good with the tenth of October?
Yes.
And then having the um. The applications due on the twenty-third of September.
And then talking about the workshop.
Talking about him on the twenty-seventh at the workshop.
Does that work for staff?
Yeah, that's perfect.
Okay.
And then does this? So, yeah, so the question is, does this application? So I look at this application. Is counsel good with this application going out?
Is there a reason why we don't ask for signatures on this? No, I meant signature, like going out and getting signatures.
Yeah, that's a that's just a state um election voting. This has nothing to do with this.
So they're not voted on. We appoint. It's an appointment.
You just have to.
From my mom, they're going to get from my mom recommends.
So are there that 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 would be the next question is, is there anything as you just look through this that you'd like added or or changed? Um, you know, like.
You do?
The very last question.
Yeah.
Additional information or references you believe may be helpful considering your.
But who's going to follow up on them? That's the question.
Yeah.
Well, that'd be.
They. That's the question. You're asking a question that you're.
Basically, an opportunity for them to just say why they think. I think what they would utilize that for. Or if they're going to go, well, my best buddy is the mayor. It's like, so they're going to write.
You get nobody writing that.
Just saying.
Maybe mayor pro town, my buddies.
My buddy is the mayor.
May I give one suggestion? I mean, everyone who applies is going to give all the right answers to these questions.
Sure.
So so what is it you guys truly value about? Working together on this council? What are what are your values for what a a council member? Should have personality wise and temperament wise and compatibility wise and.
Do you know Heather?
We're going to clone.
We're going to do a clone of Heather and then we're just going to sit sit at them.
I think that's what the interview, because the other thing is. We do it. We did have a list, Mike, of interview questions that were kind of rebuilt.
Yeah, so at the at the workshop, it would be to discuss applicants to interview and also finalize questions and we would just bring. Some sample ones, and if you have some, you know, you come to that workshop with, I think this is a good question. You guys decide on the questions and. Have those ready, you know, at that workshop prior to the time.
One thing I think moving forward, Mike, just to throw it out there, was there anything else planned already for this workshop that is going to make? If we pack this on top is going to make our workshop crazy.
So it's our uh it's our first, it's the budget overview and by charter, we we have to. It's not a, it's not a terribly long um presentation. It's just starting the process.
Just dates pretty much telling us when we're.
Yeah, so we're going to go over the process and then then an. And then an overview of the um the the draft strategic plan. So those two things are on there. So this one, this would be fine.
I don't, but I don't think this will take that long. I think this is going to be unless we're unless if we have twenty applications, then this will take longer. If we have six, I don't think it's going to be an issue, even ten, maybe not.
I would ask the rest of council, I mean. Out of half their top five.
Yeah.
Well, we have a list before the meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, can you get that to us that Friday, Deb, before?
So the other question is, can we just set the timeline of like two in the afternoon? So you've got time to get it all to us instead of like five PM? It would be my recommendation. We always say five PM by the end of the day, but.
Maybe the twenty-second, actually. The twenty-second.
Yeah.
And at that workshop, there will be apples and honey out of.
Right.
I'm okay with that. My favorite snack.
Yum.
Then a couple.
Okay, I mean, it's the new year. We're partying like it's fifty-seven, sixty-four.
I thought you were going to say nineteen eighty, but he didn't.
No, nineteen eighty is way too long.
We party.
Amy wasn't even born.
Definitely party.
All right, so let's let's focus again because Mary Elizabeth, we've got. All right.
I do have a question for Mary Elizabeth, though.
Yeah.
As this process is going on. Can you offer any caution about conversations we should? The people who approach us about this.
But what if, like, should we not suggest to any, hey, did you hear about? Is that what you're asking?
Have a conversation, have a phone call with you.
When are you planning on announcing that we're looking for it, Mike?
Well, this is what we're going to decide tonight.
Yeah, so when is that?
That's so the question is, looking at the dates, Mike, how does this fit into our dates and what we want?
I think I think with what you're planning on today, it could be the official date and tomorrow we could get this posted.
How do you feel about that?
I feel really sad. I feel, you know, it's kind of one of those decisions.
Yeah.
No, but I'm taking this, Deb. Taking this, thanks.
Um, wait, you can't take that till your official.
Yeah, not done yet.
Come on.
You know, it's one of those decisions where you know it's the right thing to do, but you don't like the decision. And, you know, I hope after I retire, maybe run again because I I feel conflicted because people elected me and I feel like I'm not completing my term, which feels disingenuous to those people who voted for me. But I also need to have a life, so you know, I'll be back. I'll be back.
All right, so that, so I guess at any point when you. Get that turned in.
Tomorrow.
That she has to have it, right?
So I need to just write a letter to all of city council and Mike or who do I?
Take this.
Yeah.
She just stated right now.
Okay. Hi, Heather O'Brien, do solemnly swear, no, um, announce my official resignation effective uh September, what is today?
Six.
Number six.
The end of the meeting. At the end of the meeting.
Twenty-two at the end of the meeting when Mr. Mayor says we are now adjourned. That will start the clock. How's that? Okay.
All right, thank you, Heather. So any questions, no? Anybody have any questions, any changes to this questionnaire that's going to go out?
We have a few we wanted to tell you about unless you have some you want to point out.
You want to suggest or you want to tell us?
Yeah, there's a few things we need to make. Yeah.
All right, yeah.
So so number five, are you committed to serving an entire term needs to be reworded to specify, are you? Committed to completing the term of the vacancy that ends and we'll put the date because it's.
Like the last person that's.
Hey, you just set it up there.
Put that in there. It's all right. It's fair. It's fair.
Or is a.
Question four, we always get this question when people are looking, so we could just extend that, you know, the minimum amount of meetings are the first, third. Fourth Tuesdays of the month plus other boards and commissions you could be a liaison to and special events. So just to give a a picture, because. We have had people that come pick up the packet to run and they're like two meetings, right? And it's like, no, there's a lot more than that, so.
Questions like, what do you view as the proper role of government?
I think those are interview questions, not. But yeah, unless you're wanting to have more on here to vet down.
Oh, you just heard that.
So you're going to tell us, let's.
I think I think.
Is Mary Elizabeth going to tell us?
You think number seven needs to go like it's not a.
No.
You're not applying to a border commission. Number six, we just after appointed the word appointed on the second line as a as a liaison to a particular border commission, so just a small thing there. At the end, after the signature, we wanted to change it to all applicants are strongly encouraged to attend a regularly scheduled city council. City council meeting. Uh, let's see. Then the frequent not, it's kind of a weird sentence there, but there I I think we would just put.
That doesn't affect this this position. I mean, what does our charter say?
Yeah, I think if we.
Yeah. Well, it says, yeah, but it says.
As long as they're.
On 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 whatever you unexcused absences, which uh I've only had two in the time I've been here where. One, they overslept. The other one, they forgot because we changed the date on it. We changed from a Tuesday to a Monday because of the holiday.
I think we just put what's in the charter. That's all I was going to say.
You work hard for the day.
I think it gives us a an out in case somebody's not coming in.
Think we just put what's in the charter.
Right, I agree with that.
That's all.
Mike, if you're going to take out number seven, would you um expand eight? Because I feel like that that information could give us a little bit more on people. So if there's more lines there, they might be more inclined to.
More on people.
Yes. There might be, you know what I'm saying? So like if there was some more space.
More free space.
They might take liberty to write more and give us more.
Right.
Those people.
Do you want a simple? I mean, I know you're going to have a number of interview questions in an interview, but do you want a simple question of why are you interested?
It's already in there, number.
Okay.
Number two.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
On the front.
Oh, yeah.
Then there's a there's a line we want to add at the end that, of course. Lets them know that all applications become subject to disclosure pursuant to the Colorado Open Records Act, just so that's not no surprise to them. In the posting, not along where you could get this application. We will have what the charter says is required, you know, the the duties of a council member and the requirements to be a council member, so. So we'll have that in the place on the website where you go to get this application.
Where it says the only way to resign is by death or.
Mike, if someone. If someone calls you about number six, what is your answer to that question?
Yes. I'm enjoying.
Conflict of interest.
Yeah. Specifically about boards, a particular board and commission.
So.
I guess now that I'm looking at that again. When you guys decide who's going to serve as a liaison for what board, would you kind of vet through this then potentially?
Would they just take mine?
If somebody's, if.
May not work.
There was a conflict.
It may not work.
Oh, God.
Like what schedule may not work.
Or somebody wanted arts and culture and I strong-armed them.
The other.
Mean that wanted it, right?
Mike. I think you're asking about because of the policy that the past council made about. Family members on other boards and that, and I think that's where I think that's where they're trying to say what they. I think we'd better explain that a little bit.
Yeah.
Do you have a family member that serves on a border commission or worked for the city of Fruta? That'd be.
Anything else that might create a.
Right, that would create a conflict.
I we, I don't think we.
Certainly automatically disqualify them.
No.
No.
I think we would take it out.
Okay.
Yeah, just take.
Later.
Have a relative on a border.
Right.
So that would be something that have to be vetted out.
But they could resign from that. Right. But you don't want to get that upfront, so we'd know to or that would be more of an interview question is what we're we're.
Have any family members that are serving on.
A board or working. Right.
Yeah.
But I want to be careful of our time. So can we just say, do you have any family?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Maybe change six to that, just a very simple, do you have anybody that's currently?
It doesn't.
No.
It's good information. It gives you guys, you can call them when you decide and let them find more information.
But it would help us. All right, because your interview question, we're, we haven't decided how long we want to set interviews. That I guess that'll be our workshop. We can say, how long do we want?
Yeah, and it also plants the seed that that's something they're going to have to work through.
Right.
You just got your little wood thing made.
No.
She waited till she got that.
Yeah, and it's like going to be eleven o'clock before we get out of here, so I'm.
You scored one of those cool pins the other day at the workshop. You scored one of those cool pins the other day at the workshop.
You all of them that we.
I see, I, I see.
That's not the same thing.
Get the swag while you can.
That's why I have a solid. Alright, anything else, Mike? Is, is that clear enough direction?
Yeah, that is.
Cause we're more or less asking Mike to rewrite this and post it. So everybody's good with that, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright. Alright, um, any other council reports and actions before we go into the next item?
I'm sorry to do this.
I also have an O.
But I wanted to re-go back to Ken's, uh, youth action council. When we do the movie thing that we're doing in. Can we incorporate the youth action council and let them do popcorn or drinks or something like that? Because they do those types of movie things and stuff. But anyway, yeah, let's try to incorporate them in that event.
Great idea.
Great idea.
Good suggestion.
Alright. Anybody else can have anything that they.
I, I actually really do. Um, I did go, I did go to the community engagement event with, um, superintendent Brian Hill. And it was.
Oh.
Really fantastic. Um, it was well attended and he just. Listened, but also gave, um, important information and I was just very impressed. But I did ask him as a, the city of Fruta in his wildest dreams of. You know, he, we, he was talking about all sorts of different partnerships and what would, what? If he could just make up his dream, you know, partnership with the city of Fruta, what would it look like? And he, he first of all said that we do a great job partnering with them and how he doesn't like to pin people against. Other cities, against other cities.
But we're better than.
A really, really great job.
Hook the end of the same thing.
Yeah. But he did say like, the idea of, and I know like you guys just went to the school of Monument Ridge, right? You and Mike, but similar things like that where like, you know, maybe some of us could take the time to go to lunch or, um, things like that. And I actually have a specific idea that I might like to engage in, but yeah, but, um, yeah, same. I, I also would.
You're not taking our thing.
No.
We got Shalit coming up.
I know.
I also would love to, this is maybe an impossibility, but like if, if people, city staff or council or whomever, um, took like a morning. A, a week to greet students at the high school specifically, um, just like in the door, somebody you recognize these kids all the time. I'm just thinking mental health and a smiling face and a greeter and someone that they recognize on a weekly basis. And we, this is a bigger discussion, but I'm just putting it out there right this second. We can talk about it later, but yeah, yeah. Okay, now I'm done for real.
That's if we get the school board to come here and greet us for, greet us tonight would have been a good time for him to come greet all of the people here. Alright, any other questions?
We were just talking that we're about to reach out to the schools to do our, you know, once a year, each school comes in for the recognition. So that's another thing we do that will, we'll get going again. Now that school's back in.
I want to have Heather here to help me again.
No.
Alright, Janine, you're up.
We'd also do other schools besides district fifty-one.
I remember you asked.
Yeah, why not?
Okay. What other schools?
We would need to know what schools. We just do the ones in Fruta so far.
We only do the ones in Fruta.
Well, but like.
But we could do more. I just.
And students that live here.
No, I'm just saying, um, I'm not against it, but you need to tell us what schools. There's a lot of schools out there.
We, I mean, I'm just, you know, just, um, we're a cap rock family. So I would love to.
Is that in Fruta?
No, but a lot of the teachers.
A lot of the, there's kids.
And a lot of kids live in Fruta.
Students.
Definitely a fruit of presence at Cap Rock.
Yes. And Janine, but your school.
My school is, but yeah, uh, but if that might be more student specific than school specific, I don't know how, I don't know how your recognition.
But right now the recognition is up to the school. So the school, so some of them have done different things. So like, um, Monument Ridge, they did all of their. Student council leaders and that's who they, and then they recognized all their teachers. They want to do that. Other ones have done student of the month. And so that one is one, and then teacher. So I mean, every school, we didn't, we don't give them restrictions. We just say, hey, we want to recognize your school, either students, teachers. Uh, I think the high school, Todd McClasskey picked who he wanted to present to. So we don't really put any criteria on it. If, is that correct? I mean.
Yeah, we kept it simple when we brought the idea to them, just how, whatever's easiest for them, for teachers and students, whether it's usually a program they already have going.
I think, I think to Matthew's point, it would make sense to include the charter schools and then that would probably cover the bases.
I'm glad, I can gladly be a liaison.
You that list.
Okay, that'd be great. Cause. Cause I, I know.
The one if we did it all charter school.
Four to five already. And I don't know if there's others. I mean, there's a lot, so.
I mean, if you did all charter schools and then it was open to Fruta teachers and students, that way it was a.
Still, yeah, still specific to.
Right. To the, to, alright.
Can we do grand junction and we specify that they send Heather O'Brien to?
And I guess that's, well, I'm not to throw wrench in gears, but there are tons of teachers that work at Central Junction, other schools that live in Fruta and.
So, so I think a workshop would get pace to discuss it. Cause I think we would come up with some creative ideas. And it gives staff time to come up with some creative ideas to help us. So.
And decided if we're going to have one every meeting.
Right.
The year. Yeah.
Alright, anything else, Janine?
Nope. Thank you for asking.
Alright, cause I think Mary, Mary Elizabeth is like, I gotta drive home tonight and it's already nine thirty. So, alright.
It makes two.
With that, we are going to move into an executive session. So I need a motion to move into executive session.
Mister Mayor, I move, we move into, we convene into executive session for discussion of a personnel matter under Colorado Vice Statute, section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two. Or F and not involving. One, any specific employees who've requested discussion of the matter in open session. Two, any member of this body or any elected official. Three, the appointment of any person to fill an office of this body or four, an elected official or personal personnel policies that do not require the discussion of matters. Personal to particular employees. The city attorney's formal review.
My second.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
We do that after we start that. I've got it down.
Counsel Cry?
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien?
Yes.
Counsel Bremen?
Yes.
Counsel Perser?
Yes. Where do I start?
We're missing. At the little girl's room.
Do we need her vote?
No, it still passes five zeros.
Passes five zero.
She was anti, she's out.
She abstained. I like it noted that the, uh, attorney tried to correct the motion.
Yeah, I know.